Well, good evening, everybody. Appreciate everybody being here. We've got a packed crowd here. Glad you guys are here tonight. We've got a lot to do tonight and a lot of exciting things that are planned tonight. So let's get started with standing. And we're going to hear the prayer from Mr. DeVilleo. Then we're going to follow that by the lead to show the flag.
Thank you. In lieu of a prayer tonight, I have two verses I would like to read. First is from the Old Testament, Leviticus, Chapter 19, verses 17 and 18. Thou shall not hate thy brother in thine heart; thou shalt in any wise rebuke thy neighbor and not suffer sin upon him. Thou shall not avenge nor bear any grudge against the children of thy people, but thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. From the New Testament, Matthew, Chapter 5, verses 43 and 45. Ye have heard it hath been said: Thou shalt love thy neighbor and hate thine enemy. But I say unto you, love your enemies; bless them that curse you; do good for them that hate you, and pray for them which despitefully use you and persecute you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo, for that kind prayer. It's great. Good job on that. Okay. Let's start off with the agenda here. Council has an agenda of September 14th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted by unanimous consent. Sorry about that. Disbursements for August 31st, September 7th, and September 14th. Council has had a chance to review the disbursements of the 31st, 7th, and 14th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections for the disbursements? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the disbursements be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. So our first thing tonight is the discussion of the county repurposing center. So Warren, if you want to come on up and enjoy, you want to come on up and tell the public what we've been working on?
Yeah. Good evening.
Yeah.
So the Rose Department's been working on-
If you could put that mic a little closer to you, that'd be great.
Is that better?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
The Rose Department has been working on a repurposing center for a little over four years. We started out just doing it for ourselves. We've gotten to where we're producing over 18, 20 different types of materials, from topsoil to mulch to compost, to bio retention, to recycled concrete, recycled asphalt, several grades of stone and dust. We've had two pilot programs that have both been very successful. We currently are completely out of material from our last pilot program. And we have, and I believe you have in front of you, what we propose as far as materials that are there now to be recycled. Obviously, there, some of it is immediate. Some of it would take three to six months, depending on weather, up to nine months, like bio retention materials, mulches, compost, topsoil, et cetera, because they have multiple times of flipping in different piles and segreg-, you know, where it gets segregated and separated and that kind of thing. But there are, there's a large volume of concrete there ready to process along with asphalt, thousands of tons of trees. We're expecting from the airport, I'm not sure if it's the brown areas, but I believe it is, but we're expecting over 10 acres of wood logs and material to come in there from this second phase, I think second and third phase. We already accepted in the first phase. And, you know, along with what we have there now, that's a big deal.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess I'll let Joy go over the budget part that we, where we were and what we're at now.
That'd be great.
And so, thank you.
Yeah, give me a pull that budget to-
Sure. Okay. Is that better?
That's good.
Okay. Excellent. The issue that we want to discuss tonight is that when we prepared the original budget for the project, we projected cost for the fiscal year of $750,000. After reviewing the cost, determining the equipment that was necessary to get this project up and running, we've determined that we have options to lease and to purchase some equipment. And as a result, the budget that is required to get the project up and running for the year is a million, $1,026,000. So it requires an additional $226,000 to fund the project for the current year.
Counsel, what I would say is, I mean, yes, Warren's been working on this project for a long time, as you know. Council's supported moving forward. Joy's done a wonderful job coming in and doing analysis of projected revenue versus expenditures. It appears at this point in time, we're going to need the additional funds that Joy mentioned to get it up and running. We will initially rent some equipment to begin processing materials while we come back to council for enabling legislation to enter a long-term lease for the appropriate equipment and purchase of other equipment to move forward, all while working on some headwinds with regard to permanent uses of the property. But we are following a plan that has been vetted with you on the council. And tonight, the request is for the loan of that figure, which was again-
$226,000.
$226,000.
$276.
I'm sorry, $276.
$276.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory.
From the general fund to the enterprise fund that council did establish, which will be baked into the projected revenue for payback to the general fund.
That sounds great. Warren, could you just, for the people that are just tuning in and not realizing and hearing this for the first time, could you sort of do a quick, tell them what we're using, we're selling it and we're using it ourself? And that's one of the main reasons that we're trying to make our own product for the county to save money.
Yes. Excuse me. Absolutely. So the Rose Department, over the last five years, has taken on a lot of in-house projects that have just been unheard of, to be quite frank. And we've done widening on Goldsboro Neck for it existent, you know, is a good example. We've done some major paving projects in the county. We've used the recycled concrete. We've used thousands of ton of that that we've recycled ourselves, not to mention, we sold back everything for the parking lots that were done for the new schools. That was all recycled material from the schools. And then we sold the material back to them to build the parking lots. Did you get that kind of idea? You know, we changed our ditching process because we're doing a lot of retrofit ditch work as well. So we take the topsoil off before we do the actual ditching so that we're able to salvage the good material. So it's a process, but it's going very well. And we have currently just under 100 contractors that are signed up that use the facility to bring in material and to, will eventually, will buy material.
Okay. Great. Okay. I appreciate that, guys. So at this time, I'm going to open to the floor for discussion. So, Mr. Pack?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. My question, Ms. Callahan, is actually directed towards Mr. Salinas, I'm sorry, Miguel, regarding temporary use certificate. I'm fine with Joy's report regarding the fund shortage of $276.152, but I want to be clear that the temporary use certificate will be extended for the project going forward. And how does that mechanically work?
Sure. It will be extended, but currently they're operating under two temporary use permits. As long as they're still going through the exploratory phase on the repurposing facility property, those permits will remain in effect. I have the ability, as a planning officer, to permit extensions of those use permits. So Mr. Edwards would just have to request those extensions at the appropriate times.
We got you.
The current use, Warren, when does the current temporary use certificate expire?
We just renewed it about a week ago.
So it has been renewed?
That's right.
There's two. One is for the concrete asphalt. That expires in February of next year. And then the other one is for the woody debris.
Yes.
And that expires, I want to say, late October, early November. I can't remember the exact-
Yeah, one's a year and one's nine, every 90 days.
Ninety days. Right.
That's correct. And if I could, Mr. Pack, just to clarify something for the council as well, I reached out today to Miguel and wanted to make sure that with us acting under a temporary permit, we can still put in the scales. We can have a temporary storage building there because if we put the well in for fire suppression, we have to have somewhere to put the pump so it's insulated and heated through the winter. So we're allowed to do that as well. And we're also allowed to do electric and lighting and all the things that make it a safe facility.
Will that have to be specified in that permit, Mr. Salinas?
Yeah. I'll have to amend. I've asked Warren to just submit an amended site plan and, request formally, and I just amend the use permits. The use permits are for the processing and resale of those products. And clearly, that cannot happen without the use of scales. And obviously, electricity and the well and the equipment for the well are needed for fire suppression, a very, obviously, life safety issue.
Okay. So we just need that plan revising over to planning zoning?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Callahan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
Numbers question. On the third page, we have some comparatives between the Rose Department calculation and the pilot study that was done by Davis, Bowen, and Friddell in February of this year. And there is quite a difference in those numbers. The pilot study is a lot more in those calculations. Could you tell me what accounts for much lower numbers in our revised budget numbers?
So you're asking?
Just for an example, I'll just pull one. You know, revenues fiscal year 2022, revised budget $450,000. Pilot study was $900 and some odd thousand. So that's half.
Correct. And so the revenue budgets that we're presenting are recalculations by Warren and his group using the materials that he has on hand at this point.
So what did Davis, Bowen, and Friddell use that made their numbers so much larger?
So the numbers they used, Mrs. Pack, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Price. The numbers they used were numbers based on when the materials were coming in daily from the school. We had days that we had 400 loads or more, 400 truckloads a day. And that's where they base their numbers. And the other thing was, we had equipment there to recycle all these materials. So I tried to go back because we've been, we were shut down for a month, and then we were shut down for a month for COVID. So we lost two months out of this year's from January. And then we don't have any equipment to recycle what's there.
So how could they make their calculations based on the school when we know that that's a finite period of time and they projected out that they were going to continue with those materials?
Well, they were projected, so I didn't do the math for them. So I'm just guessing, an educated guess. I can't hear you.
We paid the money for this when they-
Well, I didn't, yeah. I didn't do it. They did. But what I'm trying to tell you is, they also used a daily factor based on what that piece of equipment, what each piece of equipment out there would do if it was running that material. So at that time, when they did it, we only had 10 or 11 materials that we were trying to process. We were learning the process as we were doing it. I think my number is very low, the 450, but I wanted to be realistic.
Yeah. I'm just troubled by the difference between the two.
Everything that we did, I went back this time, and I was realistic, and then I cut it. Because I want to make sure that I can do what I'm saying I'm going to do because it's, the county and the taxpayers are putting a lot, you know, a lot out there to allow us to do this. And I want to come forward, and I want to make it happen, and I want to make it work.
Oh, I appreciate that. I appreciate you being more conservative. Did we make any decisions to continue to move forward on what we've continued to move forward with based on their inflated numbers? Because we want to make sure we're working with real data. I mean, we probably would have been better off just using your numbers all along. So it's just, it's just a big discrepancy in numbers, and I was just curious.
No, I agree. There is.
Thank you.
And so, you know, there are differences in the revenues as well as the costs. So if you look at the cost going forward, the pilot study costs are, the pilot study costs are lower than the revised budget. And, you know, the reason that the costs are lower is because of the fact that the equipment and building that we need to buy, the pilot study spread those costs over a 20-year period.
Yeah.
And-
Which was too long.
Right. And so in our revised budget, we spread it over five years, which would be the period of time we'd be leasing or paying the, paying back for the purchase of the equipment, the borrowings.
You good, Ms. Price? You good?
Yeah. I just don't think that they used the right numbers at all. They used, you know, they told me over 20 years, which we should have said, no, 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 20 years is far too long. So just disappointed in their numbers. Thank you.
Mr. DeVilleo? So this is a unique project where we had a new finance director come in mid-year or two, so with this. And I like that because it's kind of an additional audit to this and sort of looking at it with new eyes again. Because you were, you were not hired to do this. When you were brought on, did we, were you still receiving highway user fees?
A minimal amount, yes.
Yeah. So, and then you were charged with trying to find revenue for the county, not at taxpayer expense.
Right.
So I think you're doing a fantastic job. You're starting up this enterprise during an incredibly difficult time, just with COVID and problems, again, with trying to get the products and equipment that you need. So I want to compliment you on fighting through this because this has been difficult. You've had two finance directors, and you had another company that came in and gave numbers as well. And there's projections that, yes, if you're running the equipment all the time, you could have great numbers, but we keep cutting you off at the knees, trying to make this thing work as constructive as we can with limiting the budget as, as we have to because we just don't have unlimited funds. So I think you've done an excellent job. I appreciate what you're doing for the county, trying to repurpose the surface that we're taking up and saving us money so we're not buying basic. This is, it's, it is expensive, but again, if we were still getting those full highway user fees that we were, we wouldn't even think about this, and everything would be wonderful. But it's not, and you're fighting through it. So thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Lesher?
I appreciate the numbers and the analysis here. Is, can you, can you clarify for me the, if this is financed, well, whether it's financed privately or financed through county funds, are we seeing a payoff of the investment in fiscal 2026? Or does, or is there a longer payoff period for the upfront investment?
So if you look at the analysis, the very last column on the second row-
The green?
Yes. Shows that at the end of fiscal year '26, that's when we realize our first positive.
But that's a cumulative positive, not just, not a single year positive.
Yes. Correct. That's when you break even.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Warren, you, like Mr. DeVilleo said, you've been doing and working hard on this. And we have been, you know, like you say, struggling on how to make all this work. And you've done a great job. And I'm all for, you know, giving you an extra couple hundred thousand to try to do what's needed because that much farther. I am a little cautious because of the zapping and, you know, stuff with Health Department. We've got a little ways to go with all that. I'm a little hesitant, and I want you to be a little bit cautious, too, that we're planning everything before the court here because we don't have all our approvals yet. So I want to be very sensitive on what we have to have out there for you. That's why we're, you know, we don't have all our approvals, so I'm a little cautious about it. So, but other than that, I just want you to think of that in a broad band, in a business mindset, that we're not, we don't have a green light on all this yet.
Well, if I could comment on that a little bit. Mr. Clark is working with me through Public Works, and we're currently trying to get a quote from Davis, Bowen, and Friddell to do a dry-wet test for septic soil tests and that kind of thing. And I think, you know, I believe from what I have found, there's going to be something out there because you're only talking about one or two or three people minimum using the bathroom a day, if that. If not, we're following the advice of the Public Works Advisory Committee, and we've done every avenue that we possibly can do. And the only option would be to hook up to the sewer, which is literally very easy to do. By then, we will have created enough revenue to pay for it. So if we follow their advice and look at every avenue possible, and everything is working, then I think they should be understandable and follow through.
For that wet season, I mean, to that point, Ms. Callahan, I mean, you have to wait for that wet season test to be done, according to Ms. Morris of at the Health Department, Environmental Services Department. And you have no control over that.
Right.
So we have to wait for that season to come about when that test can be done, and then we can find out whether or not the ground can perk or not. So, you know, we're doing what we can do until that season comes about for that test.
Yeah. But it, my point is, even if it doesn't, even if we can't find suitable ground there for a septic, that's not the end of this project.
I know that.
I just want to make that clear. I mean, you know.
All I'm saying is just making, make sure everybody's aware of.
Sure.
We're doing one step at a time, but I don't want to get too far down the lane into we have to, we've got a problem. That, that's all I'm saying.
I think, that's my last final point. As we know, and I see Mike standing out in the hallway, Airport Manager, that the Tobe County Business Center will come down, probably not in a lifetime in this council, perhaps the next council. There's several tons of concrete that has to be processed. And if this repurposing center is up and running, when that building comes down, the revenues that are projected here probably will see a slight increase as well.
Mike?
Up to $7 million reserve, 400,000 tons of concrete, just that.
Okay. Anybody? Any words? Okay. So let's go ahead. Is there a motion, a second, to approve the request that submitted for the purpose of the center?
So move?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Up next, we're going to hear a report on the Easton Airport removal project. So Mike is coming on in.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. President Callahan?
Yeah.
How's everybody?
Good. Good.
Okay. Give you an update on the plans for the fall for the obstruction removal program, Phase Two. We'll give you the overview of what the plan is, and then we'll talk about the letter of recommendation that we're asking for of the town of Easton. So up here on the graphic, of course, we did Phase One last year. And right now, this year, we're focused on the areas that are in the purple shading. And do I have control of that? I don't know. Sorry about that. Give you a better idea. Thanks, Susan. Okay. See if we can zoom in a little. So little smaller project, fewer properties this year than what we did last year, but the cost is about the same because the majority of this Phase Two work is actually on the airport. So if you look just east of runway 422, we have 11.6 acres of obstruction that we already own. They sit right next to the runway. We cleared these about 15 years ago, and they grew back, so we're, we're going to take them down again. This will be a complete clear cut of the 11.6 acres. And as a side note, the majority of this brush will be going to the repurposing center as well. And then, of course, out on Goldsboro Neck Road, we have some airport-owned property, some, some trees that are, we're going to clear cut. And then we have trees in the right of way out in Goldsboro Neck Road, a little over an acre worth of work. And then we get to our residential area, Hazelwood. We have approximately 10 trees remaining in there that we have approval from the residents. They've been, we've, they've purchased navigation eas-, we've purchased navigation easement, so the property owners have been compensated, and we will be removing 10 trees from Hazelwood, which will finish that project. We have approximately seven trees over on the APG Media Site. That is currently on hold while we resolve an ownership issue with that property that may or may not get done this fall. And then we have approximately 250 trees in the Commerce Park southwest of the airport, so Commerce Drive and Brooks Drive. The properties, the largest of that property being the Easton Utilities Property owned by the Town of Easton. So that is the plan. We, we secured the grant from the M.M.A.A. just a couple weeks ago. It's about a $300,000 grant to, to do this work, and it's being, the majority of that's being paid for by the state. We've issued the administrative notice to proceed to our contractor, so we're starting to get dates and times put together. Now, with that being said, currently, we're essentially, the whole, the whole project is essentially on standby because we, we have not had our grading permit issued from the Town of Easton. And that's because after we went to the town on August the 2nd to get approval to remove the trees off town property, we also learned that week that they were making changes to their, how they administer the Forest Conservation Act here locally. So for years, they've collected fee in lieu of actually mitigating. And so we basically, they've had a system where, not just the airport, but contractors pay into their, their fund, and then the town will, you know, plant trees accordingly. So that was our plan. That's what we did with Phase One. That's what the airport has always done. So when we learned that we could not do fee in lieu, it left us with, well, if we don't do fee in lieu, you know, we'd have to mitigate in another way. Well, a conversation that's always been had is, Easton Airport, airports are exempt from the Forest Conservation Act, federal level, state level, county level, across the state of Maryland. There's only one jurisdiction in the state that doesn't exempt the Forest Conservation Act for airports when they are doing safety clearing, and that's the Town of Easton. So unfortunately, we're stuck in this, the Town of Easton does exempt us if it's going to be safety clearing on airport, but in their code, it, the language kind of holds us up, and they, we don't, we're not able to get it exempted for off-airport. So because, because the Forest Conservation Act hasn't been mitigated, the grading permit hasn't not been issued, and so right now, we're, we're, you know, in a holding pattern with this project. So the solution, which we've, we've talked about it before, we just, you know, it just takes a while to get things done. The solution is to officially request from the town that the airport be exempt from Forest Conservation Act if it is, if it is a project that is, you know, meeting federal safety regulations. Because that's the thing, we are being mandated by the federal government to do this. You know, we're not just doing this by choice, and we're not, we're not doing it to build a new, you know, big box store or anything like that. This is a safety project, so it's to meet the, the regulations of Part 77. So what we're asking for is for the council to sign a letter- So what we're asking for is for the council to sign a letter of recommendation for the Town of Easton to change the wording in their code by just a tad bit, just to add or remove at the airport property. And that would put their code in line with what the state code is and all the other counties in the state of Maryland, and it would exempt the airport from having to mitigate for removal of these obstructions when related to a safety-related project. So I also want to note for the record that even if the airport is exempted, right, from this Part 77, paying to the FCA, that doesn't mean that when we go to remove trees on properties that we're not going to mitigate and make it right by the property owner. So before we do remove trees from any property, we negotiate with that property owner and we make sure that they're satisfied. So if they want plantings, we plant on their property. Many properties that we're removing this year, we are doing things to that owner's specifications. We're planting a dozen or twenty-four other trees in a couple places. So it's not that, I don't want people to get the misconception that, oh, you're exempt, so you're just out there cutting trees. That is not the case. And when it comes to the Town of Easton property, that's going to be upcoming in Phase Three and beyond, one of which being the North Park property, which everybody's concerned about. There's the entranceway to North Park, we have to do some trimming. That's not to say that the airport's just going to take those trees out and not replace them, right? We will work with the town and come up with a plan to make that entryway, you know, beautiful while we're negotiating. So that is, that can be done before they grant us the access and removal agreement. It doesn't have to be, you know, it's not really directly related to the Forest Conservation Act. So that can be a parcel-per-parcel negotiation.
Yeah, okay. Let's go to the floor for questions.
So Mike, has the, has the fee and lieu language been removed from the Town of Easton's Forest Conservation Plan?
Not that I know of, Mr. Pack. It was just relayed to me that they're not going to collect any more fee and lieu.
Have you looked at this package at all?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Ms. Price, something?
Well, I mean, you've already stated it, that airports are exempt at the federal level. Airports are exempt at the state level and the only jurisdiction left is Easton. So I am supportive of asking them to change their ordinance to remove at the airport property, you know, in order to match everything else in the rest of the country, that airports are exempt from something like this. So I hope, I hope that that goes forward and it's not a problem.
Thank you.
So I'm supportive of your request.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVilleo?
And I agree. I'm in support as well. I definitely.
Good, Mr. Lesher. Okay. All right. Is there a motion in the second?
I'll make a motion and we send a letter as Mr. Risher has outlined requesting that the Town of Easton amend their forest conservation language to eliminate the airport.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Reemotion in Ms. Price for the second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay. Next, what we're going to have is council action on the County Board of Liquors Commission. Patrick, you want to go ahead and get us started off with that?
Sure. So since council recall, in 2020, the governor passed a series of executive orders relating to the pandemic, one of which allowed for licensed businesses holding alcoholic beverages, licensed certain ones to allow delivery and carry out alcoholic beverages. The governor's order has expired, but the General Assembly passed a law that allows local boards to adopt similar rules and regulations applicable in a county. And of course, Talbot County is unique in that its liquor laws are set forth in the county code and under the code, the local board is authorized to adopt rules and regulations, but they require the council's approval. So in furtherance of the statutory authority, the Talbot County Board of Liquor License Commissioners has approved of this resolution that would allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for carryout and delivery under certain conditions which are in keeping with the state law. And they asked to bring it forward to the council for your consideration of approval.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it for discussion. Mr. Pack?
Yeah, well, I think that, again, to stay in line with the rest of the state and to help our local businesses out who are looking for other ways to compete with our surrounding counties, I think this would be a good measure to put in place. It can always be revisited by council sometime, if not this council, next council sometime down the road, if that council felt that it was not appropriate to continue on. So it's not something we have to be locked into, but I certainly support it at this time.
I would just add to that point, this under the state law, the state law expires in two years, so this isn't going to be effective forever. This is a temporary program and there's additional reporting at the state level that will have to take place after it sunsets.
There you go. So it's just two years now.
Okay, Ms. Price?
I would definitely agree with that. It has been very difficult on businesses of every kind. I think restaurants did get hit certainly the hardest and this is certainly an additional revenue source for them. And since people are, you know, still have concerns which are valid and they're more comfortable to do the takeout and take it home, that this is very beneficial for the restaurants and to follow along with the state. It is interesting, Talbot County is really the only one that can, you know, the other twenty-three jurisdictions and we're special and it's always fun when I go over to Annapolis and I remind them that we have our own liquor laws. But, so, no, I do want to get in line with the state with this one. I think it's going to be very beneficial for the restaurants. So I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeVilleo?
I'm in support as well.
Yep.
Yeah, I think what the concern with this, when this was, when this came out early in the pandemic was, are we going to do harm? You know, how are they going to control underage consumption and so forth? And I think that we've seen that those fears were not, did not come to pass. And so I don't see any reason why we would not support our businesses in this way.
Yeah, I would agree too. Thank you, Mr. Lesher. And I'm in support of that. I think anything that we can do to help these businesses recover from, you know, from the pandemic last year and a half, I think we should wish it back. So, okay, with that being said, do I have a motion in second to approve of the resolution of number 2021?
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion in the second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. So let's move on to introduction of administrative resolutions, Council. Next, we have introduction of administrative resolution.
The first one is one that I have placed.
Do you want the secretary to read it?
Oh, do you want, read it first?
Yeah, we can read it first.
Yeah, okay, title?
Yep, yep. Madam Secretary, you can read the first administrative resolution, please.
Administrative Resolution of the County Council of Talbot County Providing for the Completion and Creation of a Civil War Unity Monument and Establishing a Fund for All Citizens to Come Together in a Joint Effort to Recognize Talbot County's Role in the Civil War. Whereas the County Council of Talbot County, the County Council recognizes that Talbot County has a unique history related to the Civil War and many citizens have expressed their desire to more completely tell the history of Talbot County and to remind us that families were split as the Civil War divided the community. And whereas for several years, the County Council has been approached by multiple groups to create a Civil War monument which portrays and acknowledges all those who fought and died on both sides of the Civil War. And whereas the existing monument on the Talbot County Courthouse grounds only lists the Confederate soldiers from Talbot County who served in the Civil War. And whereas recognizing Talbot County as a place where people from many backgrounds come together to enjoy the county's natural beauty, its history and wealth of activities offered here, the County Council finds that the existing monument should be transformed by adding a Union soldier of similar size, style and design as the Confederate soldier and listing the names of the Union soldiers from Talbot County who served in the Civil War. And whereas the County Council feels the most equitable solution to bring our community together is to complete the monument by building up and not tearing down, as it is important to preserve and expand our understanding of the history of Maryland and particularly of Talbot County during those years of conflict. And whereas, following in the history that all existing monuments have been constructed with private donations, the County Council directs the Finance Office to create a restricted fund to receive private and/or grant contributions, allowing all those who want to donate a means to do so. And whereas, the Maryland Historical Trust found that the monument is significant for its commemoration of those soldiers from Talbot County who served in the Civil War and the County Council will have any new design presented and approved by the Easton Historic District Commission before any changes take place. And whereas, the County Council is committed to continuing to tell the diverse story of Talbot County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Talbot County in an effort to more completely reflect the historical record and in order to move forward as a unified community, that the County Council shall augment the existing monument by adding a Union soldier adjacent to the existing Confederate soldier and by updating the base as follows. Number one, recitals. The above recitals are hereby incorporated as if fully set forth. Number two, modification of existing monument. The County Council supports augmenting the existing monument by adding a Union soldier of similar size, style and design as the Confederate soldier and listing the names of Union soldiers from Talbot County who fought in the Civil War in a manner that will conform to any and all Civil War memorial standards. Number three, placement of monument. The augmented Civil War monument representing soldiers from the Confederate and Union armies will remain in its current location on the grounds of the Talbot County Courthouse. Four, funding of expanding, expanded Civil War monument. Funds will be solicited from citizens of Maryland and from the state of Maryland through grant applications. Five, design of the expanded Civil War monument. The County Council will issue a request for proposal, RFP, approved design of the Civil War monument and obtain estimates for the construction of the additions and changes to the existing monument. Six, schedule for project initiation. As soon as there are sufficient funds to complete the project, the County Council will authorize initiation of the project. Be it further resolved, that this administrative resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. Introduced by the County Council at a regular meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection, adopted by the County Council at a regular meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate that. Did a good job leading that. Okay, Ms. Price, I think you want to open something?
Thank you, President Callahan. This is something that was made public back in January and, you know, has had feedback, both, you know, for and against. But I do think that, given the resolution that we voted on last summer, was a numbered resolution, that even though we have received a lot of feedback, especially in the last week on both resolutions this evening, and as, you know, that you all are here today and they're out in the hallway and they're outside, that clearly the public needs to have the opportunity to comment in an official fashion, you know, through a public hearing. So before I get to what I would like to say, nobody will ever agree on one solution. There are all kinds of ideas. One, of course, is to simply move it. One is to keep it. One is this one, to augment it and add to it. There's another that would add a separate Union, a Union boy next to it. There are all kinds of things that can be done, none of which will satisfy everybody. And our job here is to try to listen and find a compromise. And a compromise to some isn't a compromise, and I understand that. You know, for those who want to move it, this is not a compromise. For those who want to keep it, this is not a compromise. And we have to find a way to live together, to be together. But since I do believe that this deserves a proper public hearing, I'm not going to introduce this this evening. I will be asking the Attorney's Office to redo this as a proper numbered resolution that I will introduce in, you know, two or four weeks, whichever meeting works for that, so that everybody has an opportunity to do it in the proper way to comment on this and not just have to get an email in, in, you know, with twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice. I think that's wrong. I mean, we have gotten probably two hundred emails on these, on the resolutions and it really made me realize that this, this has to go through a proper numbered resolution process, whether it passes or whether it fails. That's the right way to do it. That's the right way to be transparent in government. And so I will not, I will not be introducing it this evening. I will bring it back as a numbered resolution for introduction in either next meeting or the following meeting after that. And I think that both resolutions should be introduced in that fashion. The other thing that gave me pause was, as an administrative resolution, I'm not sure that's the proper way to do it either, because six years ago, and I'm sure everybody in this room and who's outside will remember, that the last council made a decision based on our county attorney who said that this was not legislative in nature, it was part of our administrative function. And so we made an announcement that, six years ago, that the statue was going to remain where it was and that was, you know, five, all five council members. But the Open Meetings Compliance Board, there was somebody, people that complained and maybe rightly so. And they took it to the Open Meetings Board and they didn't think that we made the decision in a proper fashion. And so they said to us that it was not administrative in nature. So it also gives me pause that maybe an administrative resolution isn't, also isn't the right way to do it based on what happened six years ago. So for those two reasons, that's why I'm going to wait and do it as a numbered resolution because I think it's important that we think about what happened six years ago with the Open Meetings Compliance Board as well. So thank you for listening and we can move on to them.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Price. So.
Just one question.
Yes.
For Ms. Price, can you remind us what action was taken by how the council proceeded six years ago after the Open Meetings Compliance Board decision?
So we never introduced, and Mr. Pack was president, we never introduced any type of resolution or legislation. What we did was we had a big meeting over at the library where we allowed everybody to give public comment, even though there was no legislation or resolution in front of us. And we listened and, you know, at that time, and I understand times are different now, at that time, it was pretty overwhelming, the support to leave it, and I understand that times change. But at that time, six years ago, so then, I believe, Mr. Pack made another statement. He read the statement of the Open Meetings Compliance Board and then we made the decision again, but we did it in an open process, even though it wasn't legislation.
Yeah. And in two thousand and fifteen, council had come to the decision that under the administrative function, that the decision to either retain the statue or remove it fell within our purview as property, as county property. And as you do know, on closed meetings, we can discuss county property, the acquisition of county property and those kind of issues around county property. Well, that council took the approach that the statue fell underneath our closed meetings purview under county property. The Open Meetings Compliance Board, if you read their decision, it was kind of gray one way or the other, but they said that it should have been done in open session as an administrative function. So, which this resolution is written as administrative function. So that was a determination at that time, that we took the approach that it fell underneath closed meeting as a county property decision and they saw it differently and that was it. it.
And that was at the advice of the county attorney, but I would rather err on the side of caution, and make sure that it's done in the right way. Again, pass or fail, I want it, I want it done properly, and I don't, I don't want any, I want to just err on the side of caution, whether it's administrative resolution is the proper format or not. I'd rather be extra cautious.
But, yeah, the actual, again, the decision, whether not, whether not the administrative function was improper, it was actually was done in closed session. So, the administrative function, as long as it's done openly, is proper.
Right. It can be done openly, but if they don't get a chance to speak to us, and public comment's not going to be till after these are voted on, I think that's wrong. I think that we need a proper public hearing, and that's, that's what I intend to put forth.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Price. Um, Mr. Deville, want to comment?
No comment.
You could?
I've nothing further.
Okay, so, Mr. Thomas, so at this point, we're going to pull this administrative resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay. So, Madam Secretary, I guess we'll pull this and wait to next meeting?
Let me just, let me just say, and I have Mr. Thomas for clarification, just to, just to put a fine point on this procedurally. Numbered resolutions, although, Mr. Thomas, they have to be read a second time, procedurally, they're not entitled to a public hearing. Council can agree to hold a public hearing for a numbered resolution, but it's not procedurally granted or mandated that they have a public hearing.
Yes, I don't believe that rules procedures specifically require a hearing on every resolution. Those resolutions by their nature, such as a comprehensive lands or plan, that would obviously would require a public hearing.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next one. Madam Secretary, could you read the administrative resolution into the record, please? I'd appreciate it.
Administrative Resolution of the County Council of Talbot County Authorizing the Relocation of the Talbot Boys Statue. Whereas pursuant to an administrative resolution adopted and effective on March 16th, 2004, the County Council of Talbot County, the County Council, established policies and procedures regarding the use of public lands in Talbot County, Maryland, the county, for the remembrance of persons and events of historical significance. And whereas, there currently exists on the Talbot County Courthouse grounds, a statue commonly known and referred to as the Talbot Boys Statue, the statue. And whereas, the County Council is desirous of causing the statue to be relocated from the Talbot County Courthouse grounds to the Cross Keys Battlefield in Harrisonburg, Virginia, a private park, under the custody, care, and control of Shenandoah Valley Battlefield's Foundation, with all costs associated therewith to be paid from private funds and at no cost or expense to the county or its taxpayers. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Council of Talbot County hereby authorizes and approves the relocation of the Talbot Boys statue from the Talbot County Courthouse grounds to the Cross Keys Battlefield in Harrisonburg, Virginia, a private park, under the custody, care, and control of Shenandoah Valley Battlefield's Foundation, as soon as is practicable, and with all costs associated therewith to be paid from private funds and at no cost or expense to Talbot County, Maryland, or its taxpayers. And be it further resolved that the appropriate county officials and staff be and are hereby authorized to execute any and all documents and take any other appropriate action necessary to effectuate the relocation of the Talbot Boys statue in accordance with this administrative resolution. And be it further resolved that the above recitals are incorporated herein by reference as if fully set forth. And be it further resolved that this administrative resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. Introduced by the County Council at a regular meeting on September 14th, 2021, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection, adopted by the County Council at a regular meeting on September 14th, 2021, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of September in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate that. Good job. So, Mr. Deville, I'm going to start off with you.
Thank you. Tonight I am submitting a resolution to relocate the Talbot Boys statue from the courthouse grounds to the Cross Keys Battlefield near Harrisonburg, Virginia. At this time, I've secured a commitment from the American Battlefield Trust to accept the Talbot Boys, as well as commitments to fund the move at no cost to Talbot County taxpayers. The Cross Keys Battlefield is part of the American Battlefield Trust, a nonprofit organization that preserves America's hollowed battlegrounds and educates the public about what happened there and why it matters. The Cross Keys Battle was fought in the summer of 1862 as part of the Shenandoah Valley Campaign, a series of battles where Talbot County blood was shed on both sides. A few weeks before the Battle of Cross Keys, at the Battle of Front Royal, Talbot County brothers were literally fighting against their brothers. And when Union prisoners were taken, many recognized former friends and family, including Williams Goldsboro, who captured his own brother, Charles. William, in his writings, said about the event, "Nearly all recognized old friends and acquaintances, whom they greeted cordially and divided with them the rations which they had just changed hands." If the Talbot County, if the Talbot Boys make this move, they will help tell the story of the Civil War and how communities and families were divided, unfortunately, much as we are today. Cross Keys Battlefield is an appropriate new home for the Talbot Boys, where the monument will be cared for with respect and be part of a teaching history for generations to come. Since our community learned of my proposal, I've received a lot of questions. But one of the most frequent has been, why move the Talbot Boys out of Talbot County? The simple answer to that is no one wanted it. No one wanted to be subject, no one wanted to subject themselves, their business, their organization, or their government to the backlash from agreeing to accept the Talbot Boys on their property. Throughout this process, it has been very important to me that the Talbot Boys be treated with respect. And if the decision was made to move it, there needed to be a new location identified that would be able to keep it and maintain it for the long term. Unfortunately, no such option existed locally, and I feared that situation would devolve much like it, as in other parts of this country, and the courthouse grounds would be vandalized, and the Talbot Boys would be destroyed. Another question I've gotten a lot is, why have you changed your mind? My initial position on this issue was to let the people of Talbot County decide the fate of the Talbot Boys, and put the question on the 2022 ballot. While I still feel this would have been the best course, we can no longer delay a resolution. The Talbot Boys issue has divided our community for too long, and has sidelined many other important things the county council and county government needs to address. County services have suffered because of this debate, and the toll that it has taken on the county residents, businesses, and county staff. We need to get to the business of running a county back on track and move forward. The last question I have gotten a lot is, why did you submit this administrative resolution that does not allow for public comment? I believe in transparency and public engagement in local government. And while I understand the frustration of many who would like, have liked a public comment period on this resolution, I believe that the council is well-versed in how the community feels about the Talbot Boys after 18 months of hearings, protests, yard signs, calls, letters, demonstrations, news stories, blog posts, and text messages. We will do more harm than good by delaying this decision any longer. It's time to make a decision and move forward. Tonight, I might make some new friends, I might lose some old ones. And if you're angry with me, that's okay. I can take it. Tonight, COVID-19 recovery, and how to allocate relief funds and support our business, community, ensuring that there is reliable cellphone coverage in every corner of Talbot County, rolling out broadband access to every Talbot County home and business, updating our public safety infrastructure and services, providing better and more timely customer service to our customers, seeking permits and more. But the people of Talbot County elected me to make a decision, and use my judgment to make Talbot County better. And some decisions are harder than others. I believe that moving the Talbot Boys to a historically appropriate place of respect, and allowing our community to move forward, is the best for Talbot County. I would never have thought that this would be the defining issue of my first term on the county council, but here we are. And it's time to bring this resolution to a close, so we can swift, so we can shift our focus to rebuilding our relationships, and coming together to build a 21st century Talbot County. I'm proud to be from Talbot County, and I embrace our history, all of it, the good, the bad, and the ugly, because it made this community the place where I chose to raise my family. And I will continue doing everything I can to help Talbot County be the place where my sons can thrive and call home for a lifetime.
Mr. Leisher?
For generations, the voices of Talbot County's African-Americans were unheard and ignored too often. Now that they have allies across racial, ethnic, and economic divides, we are beginning to hear, we are beginning to hear them, and give them due respect. It is clear that the presence of this statue on the courthouse square would continue to rankle. Tonight's move is simply overdue. The monument is a misrepresentation of history, suggesting an inflated number of Talbot County residents fought against Maryland and against the United States in America's new birth of freedom. In fact, Talbot County voted overwhelmingly for pro-Union candidates to a potential secession convention that never met. This monument is simply not good history. And this statue shows a young Confederate soldier, not in surrender, but going off to war in his fresh uniform to fight a lost cause. In this Excelsior portrayal from Longfellow's poem, he is ennobled, heroically prepared to give his life to preserve a way of life that was economically sustained through enslaved black labor. I want to thank and commend Councilmember Deville for his diligence in identifying and securing an honorable and appropriate destination for the statue. We've heard the testimony from over a thousand voices over the past 15 months, and the overwhelming majority of Talbot County citizens who have spoken out, have requested removal of the monument from the public space of the courthouse square to a more appropriate place. We have heard from the public on this issue more than we have heard on any other issue by an order of magnitude. In talking with my constituents, with a handful of strident exceptions, they either want this statue removed, or they are just tired of this issue and want us to move on to the issues that will meaningfully address their quality of life. This resolution will bring us closer to resolution. There is still much work to do to make Talbot County an equitable, equitable and just place for all to live and work and thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher. Mr. Pack?
Yes, Mr. Callahan, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Deville, I too want to join Mr. Leisher in commending you on your efforts here to secure a location for the statue, and also to secure private funding, which was something that I had lent my voice to, that I did not want to see public dollars go into the removal and the relocation of the statue. And it appears that you have secured both a location and funding to do so. Look, I know a little bit of something about changing heart, I do. You know, I've been through this process myself back in 2015, when leading the council and voting to keep the statue in place. And I said then and I'll say now, that although we may, we may not know individually why those men went off the fight, perhaps because their friend down the street was going off the fight, perhaps because they were bored, perhaps because they truly believed in what the Confederacy stood for. We don't know. But what we do know is the overarching umbrella that the Confederacy stood for. And that was most notably the enslavement of black people. And no matter how you cut it, had the Confederacy won, that would have continued on. Written within the documents of their articles, our Confederacy is for the continuation of slavery. It's written right in their articles. So, we see what happened in the Compromise of 1877. We see what happened at the turn of the 20th century with Jim Crow laws. So, we know what the Confederacy stood for. And these statues that came about at the turn of the 20th century was basically to glamorize that lost cause movement of the Confederacy, that although they fought and lost, they fought for a noble cause. So, I've been there where you are, I've been in that seat, and I've had the change of heart that you have apparently gone through as well. And I know that it requires some deep soul searching, it requires some reflection upon self, and what, and you're not going to make everybody happy, and God knows, I know that. And, and, but you have to do what you believe in your heart is the right thing to do. You know, irregardless, you're going to lose some friends, you're going to make some friends, and that's okay. That's okay. But at the end of the day, can I go home and rest my head upon my pillow and kiss my wife and my children and believe that I've done the right thing? And I commend you on having that transformation. I was asked by a reporter not too long ago from MPT TV, what is it going to take? And I said, it's going to take someone having a change of heart. And I said quite honestly, I've been there, and I said, that's what it's going to take. It's not going to take name-calling, and God bless you guys for the signs and all that, and writing emails. It's going to take someone having a change of heart. I can't do it. Only God knows the heart of man. And so, again, I believe this is the right thing for Talbot County. I really do. I really do. I believe that this is not erasing history, it's just relocating a statue to another location where it can, it can live out its days. And if persons want to go travel and see it at that location, they are free to do so. But to have the statue out front that glamorizes a time and a period when not everybody was free, to have a statue out front which still has the drape flag of the Confederacy, to have the CSA on the buckle of that, of that young man, and knowing what that stood for is not appropriate for this day and time. Look, if Richmond can take down statues, which was the heart and the capital of the Confederacy, if Richmond can remove a statue, we mean, we, why can't we? You know? And so, and all across the South, Georgia, Mississippi has removed statues and flags, and done so respectfully, and done so respectfully. And I believe as, if this goes the way I feel it's going to go tonight, and instructions given to the county manager's office to do so, it will be done respectfully here. No one's talking about dragging it down and pulling it out into the Trevay River and dumping it. We're talking about a respectful removal to a location where it can live out the rest of its days. And I believe that's the appropriate thing for Talbot County. I support this resolution as it's laid out. It's not going to cost you, the taxpayer, one nickel. One nickel. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you there, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
I have a couple of questions. One, I believe that we deserve to know who it's being privately funded by.
And that, that's public knowledge. It's the amount, or the account is set up at the Midshore Community Foundation under the move of the monument, and there's no one individual that's paying for it.
Okay. So, it's just questions people have been asking, we've been getting a lot of emails. Moving it out of the county is one thing, moving it out of the state is quite another. And as I stated, the reason that I'm delaying my resolution is because it does deserve public feedback. And there are some people out there who maybe are supportive of moving the monument, but don't support moving it to Virginia. And to have seven days to put it out there where it really didn't even get to the public until Friday, I'm sorry, for the same reasons that I'm delaying mine, I would ask you to have a proper public hearing and let people talk about this. You're the only one who looked at, you're the only one who looked and moved, you alone are deciding to move it to Virginia. And I think there's a lot of people who would be supportive of moving the monument that don't want it to go to Virginia. So, I have, I have, I do have a problem with that. I mean, I would much rather, obviously, people know, I'd much rather have compromise and try to do unity, and figure out if we can figure another solution. But if this is going to be the solution that passes here, the people, all of the people, deserve a proper public hearing, whether it's technically necessary on a numbered resolution or not. For the same reason I pulled mine, I believe that this is wrong. And it's not of anything to do with my opinion whether it should stay as is, become a unity monument, or go. Has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with process. And after 11 years, you have to learn to do the process right. And I understand there's three people here supporting it. They'll still be supporting it in two weeks, or in four weeks, when we can have a proper public hearing. The one thing I do agree with you on is I don't want the next election to be about this either. And I wish that we could have gotten it on the ballot in 2021. And I wish that we could have gotten it on the ballot in 2020, but because of the Maryland legislature, we couldn't do that. And I don't want this to linger out there until 2022, because I, even though, you know, several of us are not running again in the next election, I still care about who is on the council, and I want them elected for the reasons that county council people should be elected for, and I didn't want it to be about that, which is another reason why I had, you know, tried to do a compromise resolution. But I will tell you, Mr. Lusher, it's not overwhelming. It's not, I don't know who you're talking to, but the minute this got out, it is equal. If anything, you know, we hear more from one side, but none of this is a scientific poll. Those who chose, who choose to show up here, those who choose to write to us, we really, we really don't know. It's those who are motivated to come out, and I appreciate the people who are motivated to come out. But out of the 200 emails that we've gotten in the past four days, it is not overwhelming one way or the other. It is very, very, very divided, and I don't want that for our community. I don't want us to be divided. And that's why a compromise, I was hoping, was going to be the best solution, so that people from here and people from over here would realize, "I can't always have my way. I can't always have my way. I have to learn to live, you know, with my neighbors," you know? So you can chuckle out there. That's unfortunate, because there's just as many of you outside that couldn't get in this room. And it's about respect. And I can tell you that members of this council have been very disrespected for the last year and a half. I would like you to try sitting up here in this seat and trying to listen to everyone, the ones who choose to speak and the ones who are nervous about speaking. We have to hear them all. And I've been through many public hearings on many different issues, and it's just as important to listen to those who don't show up as the ones who do. And I would ask you to remember that and to respect that.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, counsel. So I guess it, I guess it's my turn. First of all, I really want to thank the public in the last 10 days, the emails, and the respect of their feelings on all these emails. Ms. Price is right, it is divided. We've been dealing with this for six, seven years. And it has been tough on all of us. It's tough sitting up here. It's really tough sitting up here and making these decisions. That's what we've been voted to do.
You did have a change of heart. You did. And I commend you for that. But I can tell you I'm not there. It's unfortunate, I think, that the way you've gone about it, you've gone about it, that's you think you can do. You have. You have. And you've made a decision. I don't like it. I feel it's a mistake. I think it's a mistake moving it from here. I've always been very open-minded, and I've told everybody I've been open-minded through the years. You know, could we find a place? Could we find a place? I've always really been open-minded to listen to everybody, and I have. You know, if we were going to move it, I would have loved to have the opportunity with the public to have an input on where we want to put it. I really do. I think that's important, you know, because it seems like tonight that you are going to have the votes to move this. So I really feel like if we were going to, if you were to make that decision that this was going to move, it would have been really great if the public had the opinion on where we were going to move at. They'd want to like that. But, you know, there's a lot of people here in Talbot County, we talked about 1,000 people, but there's 40,000 people here, you know, that, you know, that really did get an opportunity to kind of feel like, hey, you know, I can live with it moving off the courthouse, because, you know, nobody's ever heard me say, "Don't move it off the courthouse," you know? It's got several monuments. It's, that whole courthouse is nothing but history and deep roots for a lot of people. It's got 84 names on there, on that statue. There's just a lot of things that people are passionate about. We needed to take the time, and we've made that decision in not giving it enough time in the sense of where we're going to put it at. I don't quite feel like there's going to be, you know, we've been working on the whole divide thing, and there's going to be a whole new batch of people that are going to be really upset. And you're right on making these decisions. We are going to lose friends one way or the other, you know? Even I will, you know? I've dealt with this for seven years too, you know? Made some of my decisions, not all the right decisions, but I can tell you this, I've really, the people that I have talked to and everything have been very respectful for me, for my decisions. And, you know, it is a decision you have to make. But I want to make myself very crystal clear that it's not about money, it's not about, to me, it's not about the diversity in this county, the diversity in this county. We're really working on that. We really are. We've made strides with the county. Mr. Pack has built things forward to do that, and we've all been pretty proud of that. But just because this monument is going to move doesn't mean that there's still some scars there that are going to go away. It just isn't going to happen. And I've really tried to put myself many, many nights thinking about, was this going to make things better? It's sort of an object, and I thought through it the best I could. I'm not a historian buff, I'm really not, and I don't make out I am. If I thought it would make this community, and there's nobody in here that thinks more about this community than I do, I wouldn't be sitting here and putting myself on the line in my reputation, my character. But I feel like we are making the wrong mistake. We are. And if anything, if anything, it should stay here. It really should stay here. So...
Can I just add one more point?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. I just want to add another just note, and I'm not coming to Mr. DeVilleo's defense, he doesn't need me to do that.
Yep, yep.
But I just want to say, for clarification, you know, we've had opportunities to engage the public, and as a body, we chose not to.
I agree. Can you stay quiet, please?
And so, to say to Mr. DeVilleo that this is the wrong way, again, he doesn't need me to come to his defense, but I just want to be clear, we've had opportunities to engage the public. We've turned down invitations to engage the public. Our attorneys from Baltimore City, high-powered attorneys, have come consult this council to engage the public, and we chose not to. So you can't say to this man now, "You're going about it the right way because you didn't include the public." We had opportunity to do so, and majority chose not to. It's not fair to now say to him, "He's not engaging the public." When you had opportunity to do it, we did not.
That's your opinion, not mine.
That's the fact. It's not my opinion, that's the fact. That's the fact.
No problem, Mr. Pack. You know, it's not a fact in my mind, okay? The fact is, Mr. DeVilleo made a decision to move it to Virginia. That's a fact. So let's do, let's move on, okay?
I have one more procedural question for Mr. Thomas.
Yeah.
Whenever we dispose of county property and land, it requires being advertised for three weeks. One would think this is, I mean, it's not a building, it's not a piece of land. However, it is significant. It's not a copier. So I also want to make sure that we're not, there's going to be half the county that's going to celebrate, well, and half the county that's not. See, that's unfortunate, because you're being disrespectful. You're being disrespectful of at least half of the county, and that's wrong. You don't treat people that way.
Thank you.
So my, no, my question is about the, you know, disposal of property and being properly advertised, because there probably could be some lawsuits over this, that we're not going through the historical trust and we're not finding out about whether or not we're supposed to advertise it.
Well, we're not required to go to the historical trust.
I'm sorry, the Eastern Historic Commission.
Yes, but that would come after any decision to dispose of. But the state law requires public notice and an opportunity for objections for disposal of real property, not public property. So for example, when the county disposes of a car or other, a desk or what have you, it's not required to put the notice in the paper three times and allow for objections. It's only for real property.
Well, this isn't a car, this isn't a copier. It's a little different.
I understand. I'm seeing apples and apples, but nonetheless, it's not real property.
Again, erring on the side of caution, one would think that maybe we should go through those procedures so that we have covered ourselves as a county.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, did you want to say something else?
I'm just asking if it is, if it is, do we need to move the previous question, or do we need a motion to put this to a vote?
It hasn't been introduced yet.
I would ask one more question.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. DeVilleo, I just wanted to ask you one more question, if you don't mind. If, in this particular circumstance, would you entertain what we're talking about? Would you entertain pushing this to, so the public can at least put their feelings in if they're going, you're going to move it out of state? I would just ask that.
I respectfully decline.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
I will, I will move the, I will move the resolution.
I'll second it.
We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
I'm going to abstain because of the procedural issue that I don't believe is being followed.
Is that allowed under the rules of procedure, point of order? If you do not have a conflict on this, can you recuse yourself?
I stated my reasons for making this a numbered resolution. I would like to protect the county as best we can, and I believe that, you know, this isn't the proper way to do this. If it complicates matters, I'll just vote no.
Is your vote no?
My vote is no.
Okay. Mr. Pack? Madam Secretary, it's on.
Mr. Pack?
Mr. Pack, false aye.
Let's move on to the public hearing, okay? So, the resolution 304, are we going to, were we going to do them? Or we're, because what I was thinking is that we did amend the agenda for these two, so I think we've forgotten.
Yes, we have received.
We're going to have to go through one of them. Okay, no problem. Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, could you read the first resolution into the record for the public hearing?
Resolution number 304, a resolution, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to revise Chapter III Amendment Procedures.
Mr. President, just advise you, the planning commission on their, at their meeting on September 1st, I guess, voted to table Resolution 304 until their next meeting, which will be October 6th. I guess that would put it, hopefully eligible for a vote by the county council on October 12th.
Okay.
So for these two, since the planning commission hasn't done 304 or 306, do we need to then delay the public hearings again until October, till after they meet, and do what we did at the last meeting and just, we should, we probably should have amended these off the agenda.
Right. Yeah, I think we forgot the, yeah.
Okay, so...
That's fine.
So do the same thing for 304 and 306 and postpone the public hearings on those until next month?
I think, I recommend that.
Okay.
So did everybody hear that? We're going to postpone 304 and 306 to next, for Madam Secretary, Madam Secretary, to what date was it?
October 12th.
October 12th, okay.
But we already advertised it as a continuation.
Okay.
To tonight, so I think people have to be given an opportunity to speak if they wish.
Okay, so we need to, we need to kind of go through the hearing. Okay, no problem. Okay. All right, so let's keep on going. Let's see, now I'm going to open the public hearing to 304. If anybody wishes to comment, come up and say you're naming your address. I'll give you three minutes for individual, five minutes if you're representing an organization.
I thought we were moving these two. Why are you going to 304?
Because Madam Secretary says that we've already announced it.
We, after last time, we continued it from August 10th. We continued it to today. So it was a continuation.
So it'll be another continuation.
So it'll be another continuation.
So we just move on.
Well, if there's anybody in the room, I guess give them a chance, but I don't think there is.
Yeah, I was just giving everybody a chance, that's all. So I'm going to, over here, is there anybody here to my left that would, wanting to come up and talk about 304? Okay. Anybody here to my right would come up and talk about 304? Okay, so, all right, then we'll close, we'll close the hearing for, or not close, I'm sorry.
Continue it to October 12th.
Continue it to both of them, but I'm not going to do this.
Yeah, yeah. There will be, so it's October 8th, you say?
October 12th.
October 12th, okay. So the public hearing on Resolution 304 will continue to Tuesday, October 12th at 6:30 in order to allow the planning commission to provide a recommendation for the county council. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please read the next resolution into the record, please?
Resolution number 306, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties located at 1004 South Talbot Street, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on Tax Map 32 as parcel 148, and located at 1006 South Talbot Street, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on Tax Map 32 as parcel 75, from S3, future planned area for sewer service, a period of six to 10 years, to S1, immediate priority status. a period of six to 10 years, to S1 Immediate Priority Status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Again, the County Council, or the Planning Commission voted to table this at their September 1st meeting. Their next meeting will be actually October 6th, so.
Okay, that's great. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on 306. If you want to provide some comments, say your name and your address. I'll give you three minutes if you're representing yourself, and if you're representing an organization, I'll give you five minutes. So, over here to my left, does anybody want to come up and talk about 306? Over here to my right, anybody want to talk about 306? You're welcome to come up. Okay, so we'll leave that open, and what we'll do is the public hearing on 306 will be continued to October 12th.
I thought 306, we needed to move forward, Mr. Stamp is left, right? Isn't 306 that we need to move forward for the?
No, no, that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's all right, no problem. It just messed me up, that's okay. Don't worry about it.
Don't want to do that.
All right, let me start over here. The public hearing on Resolution 306 will continue to the October 12th at 6:30 to allow the Planning Commission to provide recommendations for the County Council. Okay. We're all straight on that. Okay. Madam Secretaries, if you want to read 1493 into the record.
Bill number 1493, a bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the county to borrow not more than $600,000 in order to finance and refinance improvements to certain wastewater facilities in the county, and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections 19-205 and 19-207 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds, and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, that's great.
Mr. Callahan, this is associated with our belt filter press. This is, we're working to borrow funding through rural development to go ahead and procure a new belt filter press and conveyor system. Ultimately, this would be paid for by the users of St. Michael's, as well as Mardingham, Unionville, Tunis Mills, Scottville, and Royal Oak, Newcombe, Bellevue. So, that would be broken up for those different service areas.
That's great. Okay, with that being said, I am going to open that. I'm going to open the, open the public hearing on Bill 1493. And if you wish to come up, provide your name and address, and you can talk for three minutes, and if you're representing somebody or organization, you can talk for five, no problem. So, I'm going to look over here to my left, if anybody wants to come up to talk about 1463, or 93, I'm sorry, 16, God, 1493. Okay, good lord. Okay, now, on this side, on my right side, 1493. Yeah, it's disgusting stuff. Okay, all right. So, we'll leave that open. Oh, well, no, I'm sorry, we'll be closing that now, correct? Okay, we'll be closing the public hearing on 1493. Mr. Thomas, replacing the belt filter press on Region 2 Wastewater Treatment Plant is a priority project. We will vote on 1493 tonight.
Yes, so under the Council's Rules of Procedure with respect to bills, a bill must be read on three separate occasions. The public hearing serves as the second reader. However, the Councils where there is an urgent need to approve this, and the rules do provide that they can be suspended in part upon the vote of four of the five council members, unless prohibited by the Charter or the law. There is no such prohibition that would prevent you from moving, waiving the requirement that it be read on three separate occasions and moving this to the third reader at the time of this evening, with four votes.
Okay, then.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I will, I will move that we suspend the rules of procedure to allow this bill to move to third reader.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary?
We got a discussion, and again, this is how, this is unusual, but I think it's important that Council does waive its procedure at this time. This is an emergency situation, which the county engineer has come before Council over the last three weeks or more. This is costing the Council funds to process this waste material. So, I believe that although this is highly unusual for us to waive a procedure for a third reading of a bill, I think under this situation, because it does fall, in my opinion, under an emergency that the county engineer has alluded us to, I believe that we should. I believe that we should waive it at this time.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, so that there's a motion to second to waive the third reader.
To suspend the rule.
To suspend, yeah.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
And, and, so I then, I then move Bill 1493 to its third reader.
To vote.
Great. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Let me just be clear on Mr. Lesher's motion. The motion is not to move it to third reader, but to move it to vote. This is for vote, not the third reader. Aye.
But we did that before, am I right?
I said it was a requirement that it cannot, that it has to be read on three separate occasions so that it can go to a third reader now instead of having to wait till another meeting.
So, now you can ask her to read it the third time.
Yeah. Madam Secretary, could you, could you read it for the third time?
Bill number 14?
I ask that so much be considered a reading, as Mr. Stamp points to me.
Do you have a motion to bring it to votes?
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay. Okay. So, let's move on, let's move on to eligible votes. So, now, Madam Secretary, could you read Bill 1492 into the record, please?
Bill number 1492, a bill to establish the annual salary of the sheriff for Talbot County to become effective for terms beginning in and after 2022.
Okay. Open discussion.
Well, we've, we discussed this a bit at the, at the public hearing. We, we understand that this is important for us to be able to attract and retain talent. It is also really a market adjustment. We have the unusual circumstance where the salaries of the line officers in the Sheriff's Department are set in our annual budget process, but the sheriff's salary is, is set in this separate legislation, and, and cannot be changed between terms, just like ours cannot be changed between terms. And, so this, this will be for the sheriff's salary after the next election. I think in order to, and we have a sheriff who now is paid less than some of his line officers. That's, that's a little inverted. There ought to be a margin there, and I think to, to be able to attract and retain good talent, just as we have done with all of, several of our other department heads. We've made market adjustments, and oftentimes, sadly, we do that simply when the openings occur in those, in those department head positions. This is, this is a department that, of course, does not report to us. It is independently elected. This is the appropriate procedure for us to do this, and I fully support this change.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. DeVillio?
I completely agree. We saw this vote from the public that they wanted to see money being spent on public safety, and I think this falls right in line with that, so I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillio. Mr. Pack?
Yeah, I mean, although I felt that the 18% increase was a bit eyebrow-raising, I believe I can go along with it at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
I think we expressed my support at the last meeting. We just needed to wait until tonight to take care of it, and we are, again, voting on the position and not the man, even though we have an incredible sheriff, and I think that's where we got, you know, public support. Just to remember that, that this is, you know, something for, you know, the sheriff at the next election, whoever that may choose to be. But I do support public safety, and we have made a lot of changes on all of the other positions of public safety, and the sheriff's position deserves the same thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Price, and I can support this too. I, I think that the taxpayers, last election, you know, made a point that this is what safety's all about, and we want to be able to keep our citizens safe and, you know, for the near future, and, and make sure that nothing happens, and we take care of everybody, so. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, our favorite county manager.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, Council. I have a number of things here that I want to go over with you tonight. The first are our boards and committee appointments. The first one is the Tourism Board requesting the reappointment of Jeff Schneider, representing the hotel motel sector to the Tourism Board.
So, move.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next will be Recommendation for the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors requesting the reappointment of Judith Munch to the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors.
So, move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item I have is for the Weed Control Committee requesting the reappointment of John J. Shortl to that committee.
So, move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
The next item I have, if Warren Edwards is in the room, invite him to come forward. The first, the next item I have is a request from the Roads Department to utilize FY22 budgeted funds to purchase a new milling machine, portable broom, and pickup truck. As you read in your agenda packet, the Roads Department is requesting Council approval to utilize FY22 budgeted funds for purchase of new coal milling machine from a low bidder, Elliot in France, in the amount of $549,661.67, which reflects a source well discount from the Chesapeake Supply Company in the amount, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, discount. Additionally, requesting sole force purchase of a portable broom attachment from Chesapeake Supply Equipment Company in the amount of $47,000, and a water truck attachment in the amount of $15,000. Finally, requesting the purchase of a 2021 Chevrolet Silverwatt Rado 2500 double cab pickup truck from Herdrick Fleet Services Incorporated, utilizing the State of Maryland contract in the amount of $57,894. All purchases will be made in utilized FY22 budgeted funds.
So, move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Requesting, Ray should come up. Requesting, requesting the Department Public Works Award Bid Number 2013 Talbot County Region 2 St. Michael's Wastewater Treatment Plant Sludge Management Improvement Belt Filter Press Replacement in St. Michael's Talbot County. If you have information in your packet, I'll turn the floor over to Ray Clark to answer any questions you have.
And Council, just to give you some information real quick, and as well as the general public, this is a, we're requesting an award to M2 Construction to go ahead and proceed with ordering the belt filter press. One of the problems we tried to do is we tried to pump and haul the sludge to our biosol facility. Unfortunately, when we did that, the polymer that we used there was not coagulating the sludge, so we weren't getting good dewatering. We then did some bench tests with alternative polymers, and we just weren't not getting it's consistent. So, it was going to cost us a lot of money to try and find the right polymer, and we did not have the volume, I guess, to hold the material. So, it was actually going to be cheaper for us to send it to Eastern Utilities for processing.
And specifically, we're requesting that Council approve the award of Bid Number 2013 to M2 Construction for the base bid and bid alternate number one in the amount of $566,266. A total of four bids were received, and the lowest bid was found to be non-sponsored funding for this project is from the USDA loan. With professional services included, the project will exceed the $600,000 authorized in capital projects. Project costs exceeding $600,000 will be taken from the equipment replacement and maintenance funding lines for Royal Oak, Newcombe, Bellevue, St. Michael's, Unionville, Tunis Mills, Copperville, and Mardingham sanitary districts.
Can we speak to that, Mr. Clark? How much are you expecting this to be over the budget amount of $600,000?
Yeah, we're actually looking probably no more than about, let's say, $15,000 to $20,000 that would then be split up between those different sanitary districts. So, we're probably looking at basically being about $20,000 over the $600,000.
$20,000 over. And as far as the equipment that will, the money we're taking from, what types of equipment and maintenance are we looking at cycling this money off of?
This is actually part of our operating budgets. We actually have a repair, a replacement line item in our budget, so we'd be taking a portion out of each one of those sanitary districts out of that line item, that operating budget.
Have you been traditionally falling under budget on those items that you feel safe to take that money out of the repair and maintenance of those?
We are probably going to, for this, depending upon how things work out with the sewer extensions, we should be fine if we get the sewer extensions. If the sewer extensions for Resolution 235, we could run into a little bit of a negative budget for all of them.
So, you're putting some of your eggs in the basket of the sewer extension to make up for this money you're going to take out of the O&M of these areas?
Yeah, if we can get that, we're in good shape, if we can get the sewer extensions moving forward. Yes, sir.
Kind of shaky. I would say keep an eye on that with Mr. Stamp, though. It's kind of shaky, okay? All right.
Anybody else have any questions, Council? Anybody else? Good, Mr. Pack?
Mm-hmm.
Some motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, or with the bid number 2013.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion is second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
President Pepperup, Director of Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation is requesting utilize FY22 capital budget funds. House Bill 590 for LED lights for the Talbot County Community Center and replacement scoreboards at Perry Cabin Park. As you read in your agenda packet, Parks and Recreation is requesting Council approval to utilize state FY22 capital budget funds as follows. $155,795 utilizing the Sourcewell Purchasing Agreement Contract and, and Musco Lighting LLC funds to complete the LED light retrofit in Talbot County Community Center. $42,013.67 utilizing the Sourcewell Contract to award Neffco Scoreboards and Video Displays to replace scoreboards at Perry Cabin Park. Both projects are made possible thanks to delegate maps. And Preston is here to provide any further detail on this request.
Yes, we were actually fortunate to, Delegate Maps actually put this in the House Bill 590 budget specifically for this, lights, to do the retrofitting of the lights at the Talbot County Community Center, something that has, you know, as you remember, it's been in the budget a couple of times. And then, also to replace the scoreboards at Perry Cabin Ballfield that aren't working properly. So, Sourcewell is a national... So Sourcewell is a national bid process. So we are seeking to approval to use that in order to purchase these items.
And Preston, should this be approved tonight? And I hope that it will, since it's OPM. What's the timeframe on getting the lights up at the ball field?
So it's just, it's a matter of timing. I mean, luckily, we're at that point where the ball field lights and the scoreboards, it's not a critical time of year right now. It's kind of the downtime. So we do have time before next spring to get those put up. So hopefully, I think Musco is probably the bigger one with the lights. They're actually just putting the lights, replacing the top. So the posts, the poles aren't being replaced. So I'm hoping probably a four to six week turnaround.
Have they assured you that that's not a supply problem on their end? As far, I know a lot of things have been backed up, not by the vendor, but by the supplier.
Each time we've talked to them, it's been about a four to six week. As soon as we say go, they've always said it's, you know, it could be four weeks, it could be six weeks to get those done.
Okay. All right, thanks. I need a motion.
Yep.
I make a motion that we proceed with the light replacement and scoreboard replacement.
Okay, Mr. Pack? Make a motion. Mr. Villa, second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, I'll call Jennifer Moore, Jessica Moore.
Her, too.
Jessica's going to share with you an opportunity we have regarding community development block grants. And so, Jessica?
Yes, so the county is eligible to apply for a state fiscal year 22 community development block grant. Mary Kay Verteri is our grants administrator. She did put out a notice to the nonprofits in our community asking for letters of interest to partner with the county on the block grant. The county has an allocation to apply for up to $800,000. We did receive five letters of interest, and I will go through them very briefly. The first was from Polaris Village Ministries to rehabilitate a non-residential structure on Port Street in Easton for a community center childcare center. And they are seeking $500,000 in community development block grant funds. The Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center is requesting to rehabilitate a non-residential structure on Higgins Street in Easton for a community center and a community garden. And they would be seeking $125,000 in community development block grant funds. Midshore Pro Bono to continue to provide legal assistance to low to moderate income residents in Tallbent County, seeking $50,000. The Foundation of Hope to fund a program coordinator for development and empowerment training to sixth grade girls in Tallbent County, seeking $75,000. And Building African American Minds to construct a new academic center, seeking $800,000 in community development block grant funds. The staff has reviewed and analyzed the five letters of interest and believes that the council, it's recommending to council to partner with Polaris Village Ministries, Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center, Midshore Pro Bono, Foundation of Hope. At this time, we are not recommending to partner with Building African American Minds, although it's a wonderful project. They are preliminary, still working on fundraising for that project, and they would have an opportunity to work with the county in the next round. So pending council approval this evening, Mary Kay would be coming back to you at your next meeting to actually have a public hearing and describe more of these projects in further detail.
Ms. Price? Counsel?
Well, I'm just thrilled to see these projects coming forward and this opportunity being made to these organizations in this way. It's nice that we've gotten the word out and found all of these, identified all these needs in the community. So I'll move to approve the letters of interest.
Happy to support.
Second.
The second, counsel discussion?
No comment.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. I would make one comment. Jess, you've done a great job, and so has Mary Kay.
Yes, Mary Kay is doing a wonderful job.
Mary Kay's done a really good job, and I wanted to reach out to her. She's been a big part of this, so I really appreciate all the hard work you guys have been doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Great job.
Yep.
The next item I have is listed publicly as appointment of county attorney. And what I want to do is for counsel, go back over some of the things that got us here for this decision by counsel tonight. So first, by charter, the county attorney reports directly to the county council providing legal services for county government, number one. Number two, in November 2020, voters reaffirmed their desire to require that the county attorney reside in Tallbent County. And number three, in December of 2020, then acting county attorney Tony Cooper Smith tended his resignation. Number four, council began an advertising process for a county attorney in January into February of 2021 with council member Pack and DeVio leading a council committee. There were six applications received, none from Tallbent County, three selected to be interviewed, one pulled out prior to interviews, two were interviewed by council members Pack and DeVio, and then the whole council. At that point, council members Pack and DeVio and council began exploring contracting legal services, similar to what five other counties on the eastern shore do as well. A contract was developed between McLeod Law Group, who had been providing temporary legal services, which was reviewed by a third party attorney for legal sufficiency, Mr. Phil Hoon. Number seven, the local government insurance trust legit, Mr. Kevin Karpinski, an attorney, issued council advice on the county attorney as it related to residency requirements. He advised whether the council hired a county attorney or contracted a person. That person should remain acting until they meet the residency requirements, and then acting could be removed. The county did engage the contract with McLeod Legal Services, and we are presently four months into a 12-month contract with eight months remaining. Does council desire to remove the acting title now? That, so that now that Mr. Thomas meets the residency requirement as of August of 2021 to satisfy the county charter? So that's the question I'm bringing forward, counsel, to you, is whether you want to move forward to drop the acting from his title to satisfy the requirements of the county charter.
Okay, couns- counsel?
Mr. Stamp, could you, I know that we're four months into this, and we've been over some of this ground before, but could you review for us briefly about how the financial arrangement for this compares to the previous arrangement with an in-house attorney?
Sure. If you look at the budget numbers, prior to the arrangement with McLeod Legal Services, the county employed a county attorney and an assistant county attorney. And we have a paralegal in the office. You have a paralegal in your office. With this arrangement, you maintain the paralegal in the office. You have a county attorney, you have access to four individuals with the firm that are at the disposal of Mr. Thomas to address various issues. The contract is for a fixed amount of money that is less than you would have paid previously. And it's a fixed amount of money with the exception of cost for litigation. So hopefully that helps answer your question.
Right.
What I will say is that, dovetails into this, is that staff is working very diligently as counsel has directed and as we are supposed to, to build as much transparency as we can into our processes. And so you're going to see a lot more information on various things on our website that will be available moving forward, some of which is...
And Mr. Stamp, I know this is a 12-month contract, as typical with these sorts of arrangements. The counsel is at liberty to terminate this arrangement at any time, is that correct?
That is correct.
And regardless, it would be reviewed at the 12-month time?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. DeVio?
I'm just surprised he's still sitting there after he just said he got him for so cheap. No, I know the comments, I'm happy to support.
Okay. Ms. Price?
Well, I kind of like getting, was it five or six of you for the price of one?
Four, wasn't it?
Four, okay. That's what's really unique, because not everybody can know everything. And to have other people that maybe have more expertise in another area of law, I think is, you know, at least in the four months we've been doing this, you know, has been very beneficial so far. So it has worked out well, and, you know, as long as it's, you know, similar price and whatnot. But this seems to make a lot of sense. And so for those who were concerned about, you know, about this arrangement, obviously, Mr. Stamp went through all the procedures that we went through, and it's, you know, it's all above board. And I'm really happy that you're here, along with your partners at our disposal. So, thank you.
Mr. Pack?
Yes, very briefly. Mr. Stamp, thank you very much for going through the process and laying this out. And I know it must have been frustrating to have to stop and answer these questions, because some of them, as I read down, are rather insulting to me. To think that the council would not undergo a contract without it being reviewed by outside counsel, that we would not make sure that the county's interests are protected in going into a contract of this kind of stuff. We do contracts every day around here. This isn't something new. So to have to stop and take your time to answer these, thank you for doing that. I know it was, could have been a bit frustrating on your end. And look, I would, I'm going to be for transparency. I like the fact that we had our own in-house attorney, you know, with Mr. Pollan, and then with Mr. Cooper Smith and Ms. O'Donnell working as deputy county attorney. So even I was a bit hesitant about going contractually through a firm. But, you know, minds are meant to be changed. You don't change your mind, you never change the world around you, right? So, and, you know, Mr. Thomas has proven himself to be a very worthy and skilled attorney. I know Chip, I've known Chip for a while through some other counties endeavors in Caroline County and Kent County, so I knew he came from a very reputable firm. So, and we do have still that requirement regarding residency of the county attorney, which he meets, he actually doesn't live too far from me. We can throw a football back and forth to one another, so. But again, thanks for going through the process of just laying this out for the public and have to go answering these questions. Yes, we did have the contract reviewed. Yes, we did make sure the county interests are protected. Mr. Villa and I sat on the first couple of rounds to make sure that we did vet people out appropriately. So, and this is what this council has always done, you know, traditionally. We did nothing different in vetting out this position, nothing at all. So again, I am supportive of removing the active title. He meets the residency requirement. He certainly has shown himself to be a well-dap attorney, even pointing out things that procedurally, I didn't know. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. And I'll add it and add that, Mr. Stamp, I really appreciate you doing all this for us. You answered it very professionally, exact, and this council is behind you, okay? I think I commend counsel for making a business decision on this. This is a great decision for this council to make. We are so happy to have you. Patrick, you've done a great job for us. Four or five months, you fit right in at our disposal. And if you, I think what's impressive about you is if you don't know the answer, you'll find it for us, you know what I mean? And you've got a whole team right behind you. And that's what people need to understand. We're up here making business decisions, and it's a good decision to have you, because we have all kinds of, you know, technicals to add our resources. And everybody, and the big thing is the revenue that we're saving, the taxpayer. That's what, that's what we look at. We look at what we're going to be saving, and you've saved us a lot of money. Okay, so I really appreciate it. And once again, Mr. Stamp, thanks a lot for your hard work. And like Mr. Pack said, we're trying to be transparent, everything we do. So keep your head up, you're doing a great job, okay? All right, Madam Secretary? I think I've got a motion and a second, don't I?
Well, you don't have a motion, but Mr. DeVio is making a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had to make a motion, now we remove that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Acting as the...
I'll second Mr. DeVio's motion.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
And, Mr. Counsel President and members of council, I alluded to it a moment ago, but I do, I do want to just talk momentarily. I know that, you know, we're in some very interesting times right now. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. And, you know, there's certainly a psychological effect that's weighing on a lot of people. And some people may not be at their best these days. And, but I will say this, that our staff is working diligently to make sure that we are as transparent as we possibly can be.
Yes.
We get a number of public information access requests, and we try to work really fast to get that information out. As a matter of fact, what we're trying to do is identify that information that is obviously needs to be transparent and post that on a website so anybody at any time can just go reach in and grab it. So we've been able to, through our county website, tallbentcountymd.gov, we've been able to begin posting minutes from meetings from different boards and commissions. We'll continue to expand that. In addition, we are looking at other avenues of transparency. We've started putting a press release out after every council meeting to try to put context around very complex issues, to try to enhance communication, because communication is so important, especially in this time, in the middle of this pandemic, when people are concerned. So I just want to let you know that staff is working diligent to try to enhance our transparency and to identify areas where we can improve, because we can always improve. So I just want to share that with you, and thank you for your support.
Absolutely. And I want to back up with that, with your word of communication. It's very easy if you don't understand something. If you don't understand something, call the council, call, make a phone call instead of a PIA. Save us a lot of problems, save us a lot of time, you know? Pick up the phone if you don't understand something, pick the phone up. So, you know, I'm just going to leave it at that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. All right. I guess it's been a year. All right, so, Mr. Stamp, you're done, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, this does conclude the council.
Okay, all right. All right, so next, let's...
I ask that so much be considered a reading of the county manager report.
Mr. Callahan, I believe the court reporter would like a break.
Sure, you deserve one. Yeah, okay.
Joe, do you need to move to recess?
Yeah, we need to move to recess. We need to move to recess. I'm sorry. Okay. Madam Secretary, can you call, make a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, got a motion, second it. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
...will be difficult, but that's leadership. One of the quotes that I will leave this council with is one from Winston Churchill, and it states, "Mountain tops inspire leaders, but valleys mature them." So, thank you, and again, I know D E and I, diversity, equity, and inclusion was thrown around quite a bit tonight, those terms, but again, everyone starts somewhere on their D E and I journey, and within that starting place, there is opportunities for change of heart. So with that, I can respect that, and thank you for the work that you've done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard, appreciate it. Next on the list is Harriet Lowry, but it appears she has departed the room. Then Jess Taylor. I do not see her present. Next is Clive Ewing.
Good evening. Clive Ewing, Easton, Maryland. Obviously, and I'm speaking for myself, obviously, I'm disappointed in how the council went about advancing the Talbot Boys' resolution to a vote tonight. Transparent government is the best government, and you have left a lot to be desired. This action does nothing to advance understanding and unity in this county. But I am heartened by a letter that the council has received this afternoon, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation. Anybody receive that? Okay. I'll let others share with the public what that says, which gives the opportunity for the local folks to have a say in this, and that is much more than what I think you did over this period, Councilman. You knew a lot of us had invested a lot of time and energy in this, and never a response, not a one. We'll always remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Next is Lynn Milkie.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Milkie, and I reside in Easton, for the record. And I have been involved with the Talbot Boys' issue since 2015, and I will suggest that it's not over yet. But what I want to share with the council is an observation that I've made over those years, as well as tonight, and that observation is of the residents of Talbot County, and how no one's come and torn down the monument, no one has defaced it or put paint on it. It's been a courteous, and indeed, a protest, the protest for its removal is probably consistent with what the founding fathers had sought in terms of peaceful protest and sharing your opinions. Tonight, for instance, there were the Move the Monument people, and there were the Preserve Talbot History people, and everyone was courteous to everyone else. With a couple of exceptions, there was one obscene sign on the Move the Monument side. But other than that, the Move the Monument people were handing out snacks to everyone. And I guess it sort of reminded me of, if you read the history of Culp's Hill, the Battle of Culp's Hill, where you had Talbot Countyans, both on the Confederate side and on the Union side, fighting each other, but when the battle was over, they helped each other. The battle here is not quite over, but I would hope that until it is, and even when it is, that each side will respect the other and show them the grace that I observed tonight and I have observed over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Reverend Nancy Davis, I'm sorry, Nancy Dennis, whom I do not see in the room. The next is the Reverend Wendell Gay, who I do not believe is in the room.
Hey, good evening, Council. Hey, again, my name is Dave Stepp from Easton, Maryland, representing our Talbot Family Group. Members of the Talbot County Council, thank you again for your time and attention, as well as for your service to our county and community. I also appreciate your hearing of my concerns at the last council meeting, 21 days ago, back on August 24th. In response to my committed follow-through, I received two responses from members of the council, one of which was a thank you, the other of which involved a bit of dialogue, neither of which indicated any intention to act. Again, I don't sit before you today to discuss a particular position on the Talbot Boys' statue, but to ask for your action as a charter county council on other urgent, nonpartisan issues that our county needs to address. May I publicly recap my asks of the council? Number one, never fund critical race theory or CRT-related material, inspect that no tenants of CRT are being taught in our schools, and ensure any teacher or administrator who ignores such an ask is appropriately and fairly reprimanded. Contrary to what leadership is telling you, the tenants are still well embedded in Talbot County, just ask around. Again, it's time we stand up for true and real unity, which Talbot County exemplifies, not the indoctrinated division that CRT brings. Number two, ensure that all Talbot County residents have the freedom to choose when it comes to their health, period. Ban the Talbot County Health Department's vaccine passport program known as Vaccine Check, or any other subsequent attempt at vaccine passports, both digital or paper, to ensure that there will be no gateway to a two-class society, depriving our residents the opportunity to procure life's most basic necessities and services. Number three, remember, this is America, and contrary to unconstitutional mandates that seem to be a dime a dozen these days, we as Americans have the right to choose. If you believe a mask works and is the right prophylactic for you and your family, then by all means wear one. If you simply believe that it is our God-given right to not just, to just breathe, and don't want to, and you don't want a cover over your face, then don't wear one, nor should you be forced to by any government entity or rogue government official acting in the aforementioned unconstitutional fashions. My ask here is incredibly short and simple. Ensure no mask mandates in Talbot County ever again, in schools, in public, period. Fourth, last but certainly not least, may I remind you of the responsibility you have in nominating a police accountability board in response to Maryland's HB 670, more commonly referred to as Maryland's Police Reform Bill. Again, my ask here is short and simple. Please choose unbiased, responsible, non-politically charged individuals who not only understand law and order, but also understand the daily sacrifice and split-second decisions that our men and women in uniform have to face daily. In summary, get CRT out of our schools now and never fund any aspect of it in the future. Allow individual and family choice when it comes to vaccines. Get digital vaccine passports out of our county. As a quick reminder, you know, the Talbot County Health Department reports to you guys, so you can hold them accountable. Never require proof of vaccinations for access to goods, services, or to attend in-person school. Get rid of mask mandates altogether, allowing individual or family choice when it comes to masking, and utilize common sense when sitting a police accountability board. Just as you can introduce a resolution on the Talbot Boys' statue, you can introduce resolutions on the items I just spoke about. Please remember that your primary responsibility as representatives of our county is to ensure the rights of all citizens are protected. I understand that sometimes those decisions are hard, against popular belief, or contrary to false narratives. Either way, that is what you were elected to do. It's time to act on behalf of all citizens of Talbot County. As before, I'm sending an email, a copy of my address today to each of you, each of your Talbot County email inboxes. Please feel free to reach out anytime with questions or concerns, documentations, or any further clarity. I'd like to thank you again for your time, your consideration, and most importantly, your action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Priscilla Morris, who I do not see in the room. Then Victor Middleton. And David Montgomery.
Mr. Lusher, could I ask if Mrs. Ewing could speak before me? I think she's also on the list.
She was, Lynn Milkie already spoke.
Ewing.
I don't think she signed up, but I think she intends to speak, if you would win mind.
Here they're tagged in.
Yeah, sure, come on up.
This is outside of process.
We didn't get to sign up because they took them.
Yeah, we weren't able to get in here. Good evening, Laura and Chuck. Last summer, 2020, you gave Talbot County citizens some hope with 3 to 2 council vote to keep the Talbot Boys' monument. We thought perhaps that there was some reason and rational thinking left in this country after the 2020 calamity of widespread burning, looting, and murdering that occurred. Frank, this past weekend, I was shocked to learn of your duplicitousness in plotting behind the scenes to remove the Talbot Boys, not just from our courthouse, but in fact, out of the state, to the state of Virginia, out of the state of Maryland, to Virginia. Frank, you are the biggest disappointment to our county, and thanks to you and Cory and Pete, our county will forever be divided. I thank both Chuck and Laura for your determination and hard work to try to unify our community with thoughtful unity resolutions. I would like to read a letter verbatim from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation to this council dated 9/14/21.
Can I ask you not to point out, Councilman? I'd rather you say respectful, please.
Okay.
Other people did, though.
She goes with the bad.
Other people did.
Yeah.
Well, let's just try to keep it respectful.
Let's, yeah, all of us, I think. So, dated from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation. Dear Mr. DiVillio, it has been brought to our attention that there are many in your area who are continuing to fight for the Talbot Boys' monument to remain in its current location. The monument policy of the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation makes clear that the preferred and optimal long-term treatment of monuments is for them to remain where originally placed and cared for in perpetuity. No part of our response to your previous inquiry should be construed to supersede our position that, whenever possible, monuments remain unmolested in their original location. To that end, the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation supports local efforts to preserve the monument in place, and if removed, requests that an attempt be made to re-erect the monument in Talbot County. If and when it is evident that the monument will not and cannot remain safely in Talbot County, the foundation is committed to offer, to become its permanent steward under the terms of our letter to you dated September 3, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you. I'm David Montgomery. I live in Easton, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Preserve Talbot History, though I doubt I will need five minutes since Mrs. Ewing's reading of that letter really states many of the things that need to be put on the record right now. And without naming names, I thank some of you for your steadfast support. In contrast, I think I speak for many of us, that we are outraged that someone we trusted would switch sides to make this happen, and this was done in such a surreptitious manner that won't be forgotten. A policy decision like this should not be made through a procedural maneuver that eliminates not only public comment, but time for this council to review it thoroughly, to know what the battlefield looks like, to know what the arrangements are for moving it, to know how that can be done safely, even to know whether the base is going to go along with it or not. All of that's missing, and it particularly shows up that this was pushed through even though this letter was sent at 3:49 PM to the council, which apparently was not divulged to you by anyone who received it. I just want to emphasize the things that it said. It said that this foundation will only accept the monument if it will not and cannot stay safely here. The only way that could be established, as far as I can see, is if the council voted to take it down, and that didn't happen. It would only happen if the council member who claimed to protect the monument by arranging this voted to take it down. And there are good reasons why the foundation has this policy. It's intended to protect the foundation from opportunism, from being misused by politicians who are seeking to avoid the consequences of voting to remove statues that have popular support. And it recognizes that monuments are part of the history of the place where they stand. Removing monuments erases the history of their place just as surely as tearing it down. I don't know how many people in Talbot County have ever visited the battlefield where it will be placed. I kind of like Harrisonburg, I've driven by it many times, and I had no idea it was there. I might stop by sometime, but that's because I have a friend in Tennessee. On top of that, the letter stated, as Mrs. Ewing wrote, that their preferred treatment of monuments is for them to remain where originally placed. They're not welcoming this statue as something, oh, this is fantastic, we always wanted to have a Talbot Boys' statue in the corner here. They're taking it because they've been assured that we're going to tear it down, melt it, or put it in a warehouse. Those are their conditions. That should have been made clear to the council when this proposal was set up to them. On top of that, they require that if a statue is removed, an attempt be made to re-erect the monument in its home county. That's exactly what they said. Only when all of these steps have been taken that will they accept the monument. I believe that on the basis of this letter, this resolution you just passed should be reconsidered, because I believe it is defective on its face because of the letter that you received. In any case, I think the voters deserve a full accounting of how this scheme was hatched. I was not satisfied with an answer that hides behind the community foundation. The cost of this move won't be covered by $25 and $50 contributions. We deserve to know who provided the big money, and who believes he or she can buy the results they want in this county by putting money up for them. The most important requirement, I think, going forward is to make sincere efforts to find a place in Talbot County for this memorial, if this council is determined to take it out of its current place. I hope the Move the Monument will support that objective. They've said all along that all they want to do is move the monument and find another place in Talbot County for it. I've had enough arguments myself in print about whether or not Spring Hill Cemetery is a good place for it. I just hope they can live up to their word once they finish celebrating that it's going to be moved out of the county. And no matter what the legal cover for a sneaky approach might be, this was a fundamental policy decision. As I see it, the county council has just announced to the world that Talbot County supports the efforts of those who want to erase the history of the United States and replace it with unrelenting hatred of those people who came before. That's not what the voters want, and we will make sure they don't forget.
Next is Richard Marx, who does not appear to be present, and Marjorie Opalsky, who I do not see in the room. So that's the end, Mr. President, that's the end of those who have signed up in advance. Okay, thank you.
My name is Sherry Wilcoxen, and I'm from Easton, Maryland, and I want to say that I think this is a very sad day for Talbot County to be swept up in the same horrific Marxist idealism that's going on throughout our country. Wiping away history is what Marxism is based in, part of it. A good friend of mine from Yugoslavia, who left there 22 years ago, called me up and said, are you kidding me? I cannot believe Talbot County is doing this. It's really a frightening step, it's frightening what's going on in our country, and it's a sad day that is going on here in Talbot County. I too want to know who funded it. I saw you smile, you're smiling now when we ask. I would like to know where the money came from that is supposedly moving the statue. I think we have a right to know. How do we go about getting that information? I guess I can send a written something and request it back, but that needs full disclosure. I do want to thank Laura Price and Chuck Callahan for your honor and integrity in sticking with the voters that brought you here. There's an old idiom that I learned about honor and integrity, and it's kind of a folksy thing, but you dance with those that brung you. I recognize that Frank's not running again, and maybe that's a big part of this decision. Laura's not running again, but she still had integrity. People talk about respect, no respect and no response. It's just, it's very, very, very disappointing. The last second in, nobody knew, and then no response, no replies. It's not what we thought we got, it's not what we voted for, it's not who you asked to support you, and I do know that it's not overwhelming. This county's very split, and I actually think if it could ever have come to a vote, that the statue would stay here. So I want to thank you both, Laura and Chuck, and I'm sorry, Frank and Cory, you also were voted in by somebody that you're not representing, so it's very disappointing, and I hope that you think again about allowing Marxism to take over not just our country, but our state and our county, and you voted for it. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Frank, and I'm very sad to say that, at least as of this moment, I'm an Easton, Maryland resident. I have one question that I would like to put to the three individuals who are trying to erase Talbot County history and the contributions that the Talbot Boys made. When you go home tonight, ask yourself before you go to sleep, what did I do in this vote to remove the Talbot Boys, to better the life of those of us who have lived and built this county? And if there is any honesty and integrity left in your heart, the answer is going to be none, because what you've done, you've done a fine job, but you've done a fine job of creating a situation that pits citizen against citizen because you chose to disrespect and not listen to the will of all of the people in this county. Thank you.
Okay, anybody in this, anybody left over here who wants to speak? About anybody over here that's left over to speak? Okay? All right, Mr. Lusher? All right, so we're done. Close public comment, and we're going to go to council comment. Mr. Lusher. I had the honor of attending the 9/11 ceremonies at Tillman Island and again at the Avalon Stoltz Pavilion on Saturday, but also the first-period virtual assembly at Easton Middle School. Easton Middle School put together an impressive tribute anchored by their highly-regarded band. And I joined the Talbot County Farm Bureau yesterday for a tour of the Hutchison Brothers' farm. Bobby Hutchison said that this was the best crop that he has ever had in his 48 years of farming. I learned a great deal from him, showing us best-practice storage and evidence of crop damage from deer and much more. At our last meeting, we heard from Dr. James Kelly and Sandra Wieland, and Dr. William Serrato responded to us and wanted to make a few corrections. He quotes from the CDC website, "Wearing a mask does not raise the carbon dioxide or CO2 level in the air you breathe. A cloth mask does not provide an airtight fit across the face. The CO2 completely escapes into the air through the cloth mask when you breathe out or talk. CO2 molecules are small enough to easily pass through any cloth mask material. In contrast, the respiratory droplets that carry the virus that causes COVID-19 are much larger than CO2, so they cannot pass as easily through a properly-designed and properly-worn cloth mask." In the United States, through March 2021, the estimated cumulative rates of SARS-CoV-2 infection and COVID-19 symptomatic illness in children ages 5 to 17 years were comparable to infection and symptomatic illness rates in adults ages 18 to 49, and higher than rates in adults age 50 and higher. Estimated cumulative rates of infection and symptomatic illness in children ages 0 to 4 are roughly half of those of children ages 5 to 17, but are comparable to those in adults ages 65 years and older. Children are less likely to develop severe illness or die from COVID-19. Nevertheless, 271 COVID-19 deaths among persons age 5 to 17, and 120 deaths among those 0 to 4 years have been reported to the National Center for Health Statistics through July 7 of this summer. The extent to which children suffer long-term consequences of COVID-19 is still unknown. In response to Dr. Kelly's assertions downplaying the severity of pediatric COVID cases, comparing them to the flu, Dr. Serrato Wright wrote, "June 4, 2021, CDC reported that during the 2019 to 2020 season, flu deaths in kids numbered 119. Prior to that year, the 2017-2018 season had the highest number of reported pediatric deaths, with 188." This tragic milestone underscores the importance of vaccinating children. Only 22% of children eligible for influenza vaccination and for whom vaccination status was known were fully vaccinated against flu. This is consistent from previous seasons. We also largely do not know the long-term effects of COVID-19 effects in children, even if symptoms were mild or asymptomatic. We have not masked children for influenza due to its R factor of about 1 compared to R factor of about 7 for the Delta variant of COVID-19. Simplified, a child might infect one other person with influenza and seven others with COVID-19 Delta variant. They're now overwhelmingly dominant strain here in Maryland. However, given the effectiveness of masks and other layered mitigation, only one child has died from influenza during this past year's flu season. Much has been written regarding the mental health toll this pandemic has had on children and adolescents. As a board-certified child and adolescent psychiatrist, I see it daily. There is simply no correlation or causation linking mask-wearing in minors to suicide. Given all of this, in addition to the adept briefing by Dr. McGuire, I truly hope you do not condemn the Board of Education, employer, or business mask mandates, or vaccine mandates. Finally, we should choose respected, peer-reviewed sources. Dr. Kelly unfortunately gave voice to the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons in our public comment. This group is quite simply a far-right, fringe political group of less than 5,000 members out of the nearly 1 million physicians in this country. They've been around since 1943 and are known for ignorant and incendiary assertions that would never stand up to rigorous peer review. The former president referenced their backing in the now-debunked treatment of COVID-19, hydroxychloroquine. They are now found and referenced when it comes to opposing what science and data clearly indicates works, a comprehensive, layered mitigation strategy which includes masks in K-12 schools to combat the spread of COVID-19. I want to thank Dr. Serrato for setting the record straight. Okay, Mr. Lusher, thank you. Mr. DiVillio?
No comment at this call.
Okay. Mr. Pat?
All right, yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the tour at Hutchison Farm yesterday. I was actually in Lynch, Maryland, attending a funeral of a close family friend, so I'm glad to hear that that tour went off well. Just a couple of things I just want to make an announcement to. On the 15th, County Council will be delivering years of service awards to Talbot County employees at various locations, instead of normally we all come together at one location, I believe that's going to be done at various locations throughout the county for this year. On the 17th, excuse me, will be the annual county employees picnic at Harknett Golf Course, which is outside, that's going to take place at the pavilion from 3 to 7. On the 24th, will be the 10th celebration of the annual Frederick Douglass statue unveiling. There's going to be a number of different events taking place around the county on that day. You can go onto the Frederick Douglass Honor Society website and get a complete listing of those activities for that day. On the 25th of September will be our annual airport day. I know we had Micah in here earlier, should have asked him to kind of speak on that, but I forgot to, so I'll make a mention of it now, that Airport Day will take place on the 25th. They are still looking for volunteers, so they're actually paying volunteers, you know, 250. So if you have any, and I did pass it on to some young men... So if you have any, and I did pass it on to some young men that I mentor in the community, so if you have any young people or nieces, nephews, and so forth that want to make a quick 250, they also provide for them lunch as well. So they'll be out there directing parking cars and what have you. So please put them in contact with Micah so that he can go ahead and get those volunteer posts filled for Airport Day. It's always a big day here in the county.
Right.
And been very well attended. And look, when it comes to mandates and vaccines and so forth, now I'm always going to follow what the scientists say, what the professionals, Dr. McGuire's our health officer here, and make sure I work closely with her as far as any recommendations she gives to this body as we move forward. And over the years, you know, there have been governmental mandates that have come across that sometimes people did not agree with, you know? Seatbelt laws were mandated by the government that you had to wear a seatbelt if your car was in motion. Child safety seats were mandated by the government that a child had to be in a safety seat. Wearing a helmet while driving a motorcycle. I remember when that law was passed, a lot of motorcycle drivers said, why are you making me wear a helmet? To keep you safe. So sometimes government will have to to keep you safe. Polio shots and vaccines for children to go to school have been mandated by the government to keep us all safe. Wearing a T-shirt and a pair of shoes when going into a store, it's a store policy. Why? To keep people safe. So sometimes to keep people safe, government does have to step in and say, we have to ask you to forego some of your liberties to keep us all safe. Speed limits are in place to keep us safe. So we may not like it, but we do live in a country of rules, and if we all can see our way clear of looking at the larger picture, which is public safety, I think maybe that will help us ease some of the tension that is out there. And hey, getting vaccinated is a choice. No one is making you get vaccinated. You don't want to be vaccinated. You don't have to be vaccinated. I wish that you would. I wish that you would. I mean, 90% of the people who are sitting in ICU right now and across the nation are unvaccinated people. 90% are unvaccinated people. So the vaccine has been shown that it does work. It has been tried and tested. It has been proven that it does work to keep you out of the ICU and to keep you from dying. So those are my comments. Mr. Callahan, I just want to make people aware of those upcoming events in the county.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price.
Never forget. Those were the words that we all uttered on September 11, 2001. We just marked the 20th remembrance of that fateful day. How far we have come from the unity we all felt at that time. Clearly, 9/11 was very different, and we all did agree, and it was easy to be united. Issues that Americans were divided on then didn't divide us as a people. We had our differences, but we were still able to be respectful of one another. We were still able to be friends with those we disagreed with. We still loved our neighbors. Events that have happened, especially over the last few years, have torn us apart. It is time to heal. I thought it was time to compromise. To respect one another and to stop judging others because they have a different opinion. We must never forget who we really are.
Thank you, Ms. Price. And I'm going to end this and wrap this up, too. It was very, very touching, the 9/11 ceremonies. Appreciate it, Mr. Pack, you being the head of ceremonies. You did a good job. Appreciate Pete being down there. It was good. Just listening what was going on down there was very, very touching. So when you're EMS, police, firefighter, you know, I wasn't at Ground Zero when it happened, but I can tell you this. I'm a firefighter, and I'm a life member. I can't imagine pulling up to that scene. All the battalion chiefs in the first tower, there was probably like eight of them in there, give or take. Can you imagine how hard it was for the battalion chiefs to tell them to go on upstairs and go to and try to save people, and knowing, and knowing, you know, they might not see them again? So that, to me, is some of the bravest people that I've ever seen. And I just get chills even talking about it, because we all seen documentaries this weekend on that stuff and the horrific terrorism that happened, and we don't want to forget that. We don't want to forget that. And me personally, knowing I'm a firefighter and knowing that when you're going in there, and Mr. Stamp is a career man, too, I can't imagine what that feeling was like. I really can't. Because it was a reaction. That's what these guys do. That's what they're made of, their hearings. So God bless them. We need more of them, that's for sure. We need more people like that that save lives. And I'll leave it at that, but let's think about, you know, we were here tonight, and there's a lot of things at work going on, but nothing would be as bad as that. Just keep in mind, things might be bad sometimes, but let's never forget what could be, and hopefully it never happen again. So, being that said, I appreciate you guys being here tonight, all of you. I know it's been tough on all of us, the emotions and all that stuff tonight, but we'll all get through this, and hopefully, you know, staff can move on. And I really, and I almost forgot to say that Susan put all this together, and she had a staff behind her, Jess and Karen, and you guys have a fantastic job putting all that stuff together, and I really appreciate it. So I want you to be commended, because you've been doing it every year, and you're doing a fine job. So, being that said...
Ready to take us out?
Yes.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 28, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening in open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, September 21, the county council will hold a work session with Parks and Recreation and Planning and Zoning to discuss proposed amendments to parks' rules. The work session will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room and is open to the public. Therefore, is there a motion and second to adjourn tonight's meeting and reconvene as noted?
Second. Okay, there's a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.